Okay, commissioners, we are now live streaming and we are recording. So Commissioner Zimmerman, please start when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is Justin Zimmerman. I will call this meeting to order. And we have the Thursday, May 21st, 2020, Special Board of Commissioners Meeting. I am running the meeting this morning because of an unavoidable last-minute comment for Commissioner Holman. So we hope if she may be able to call in later, but I will start by having Myra do the roll call.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Commissioner Holman. Commissioner Galladay. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Gully. Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Pastello. Commissioner Beach.
Present.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Do we have any public comment?
No comment cards were submitted for today's meetings.
Okay. And if I've got the correct agenda in front of me for the special meeting, it looks like we are on item number four, and that would be if Commissioner Simmons could comment on the Election of Officers Agenda Item.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman. At the meeting of the Nominating Committee was held on May 14th, 2020, approximately 1:50 PM, immediately following this Security Subcommittee meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your board packet under tab number three. At that meeting, the committee approved the following slate of officers for the 2020 and 2021. Commissioner Winmiller Chair, Commissioner Zimmerman Vice Chair, Commissioner Simmons Treasurer, Commissioner Brown Secretary. The committee further approved that the slate of officers be forwarded to the full Board of Commissioners for approval of its next regular meeting on Friday, June 26, 2020, with the new slate of officers to become effective immediately upon the adjournment of the meeting on June 26, 2020. Although Board policy indicates that the election of officers will take place in June of each year, the resignation in January of Farmer Board Chairman Beulhahn and the upcoming appointment of a new commissioner who will replace Vice Chair Holman on June 1st leaves the Board and the agency without a chairman or vice chair for the next several weeks. Therefore, the Board may wish to consider suspending its policy of electing officers in June and proceed with the election of officers at today's meeting. If the Board is in agreement, a motion would be needed to suspend the Board policy and approve the proposed slate of officers for the 2021, as recommended by the Nominating Committee, with the new slate of officers to become effective immediately upon the adjournment of today's Combined Operations and Audit and Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
So.
Second.
There.
All right.
Hey. Go ahead.
All right, we've got a, I was gonna say if there's any questions or comments, but we've got a pending motion in a second, so I'll just go ahead and ask one quick time. If there's any, if there's no questions or comments, let's, let's go ahead and vote on it. So any questions or comments? Everybody understands what we're doing? Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, I think we just do this collectively.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, well, all those in favor for proceeding with the motion as made and seconded signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and any abstentions? All right. Hopefully that'll help out. Fill the void there. Okay, my understanding is for this special meeting, that was really the only agenda item, and then now we're on to moving into executive, at least an open session. Now we're on to moving into executive session. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, of course, we'll need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under Bi-State Development Board Policy Chapter 10, Section 10.080, Subpart D1 Legal, Subpart D2 Real Estate, Subpart D3 Personnel, and Subpart D10 Auditors.
No move.
Okay.
Okay, and then we need a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach. Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello.
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Hey, we're live on Facebook.
Okay, is everybody here? Are we about ready to get going?
Yes, we're ready. Thank you.
All right, sorry. Got a bunch of papers I'm shuffling around. Okay, this is Commissioner Zimmerman. I am filling in for Commissioner Holman today. And it is Thursday, May 21st, 2020, and I am calling to order the combined meeting of the Operations Audit, Finance, and Administration Committees.
No, Commissioner Zimmerman, we still have to finish up the special board meeting reconvening the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
All right. I'm pushing the pace. Oh, you're right. Okay. All right, strike all of that, and I am on to, in our special meeting, Agenda Item Number 10. We're gonna reconvene back to our open meeting, and as is our Board policy, no final action will be taken in close executive session. And for any items requiring final action, a roll call vote is taken in open session. And then we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda items discussed in executive session, and that would be items A, the Draft Passenger Revenue Audit, B, Draft Legal Fee Expense Audit, and C, Restructuring a Financial Agreement for the, and those are Resolutions 1056, 1057, and 1058, and we need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Holman.
Aye.
Commissioner Beach. Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, well, if there's no further business for the, for the special meeting, then I would request a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I don't think we need an up or down vote on that. We're just adjourned, correct?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
Okay.
Hey, Commissioner Zimmerman, I do believe we are ready to proceed.
Okay. Good morning, for anyone who just joined us. This is Commissioner Zimmerman. I was asked to run the meeting this morning, and we're gonna get started. This is the combined meeting of the Operations Audit, Finance, and Administration Committees here on Thursday, May 21st, 2020. I will call this meeting to order, and then I will ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Holman. Commissioner Gully.
Present.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
There.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Beach. Commissioner Pastello.
Do we have any public comment or comments submitted for this meeting?
Commissioner Zimmerman, no, no cards were submitted for today's meeting.
Okay. It looks like the first agenda item is we need to approve the minutes from the previous March 20th, 2020, Combined Operations and Audit and Finance Committee meeting. So those minutes were provided to everyone. Are there any comments or proposed revisions before we motion on that? Hearing none, can we get a motion in a second, please?
No move.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made and seconded. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Or any abstentions? Okay. Agenda Item Number Five, we have the issue of the potential refunding of bonds issued to finance the Arch Motor Set Replacements. Tammy Fulbright. This is your item.
Good morning. This item is to just ask for authorization to refund the Arch funds. We issued these bonds in 2014, 7.6 million. It was a direct placement issuance at that time, so that means one, one person or the bank purchased all the bonds. So what we're asking is if the market, if the market conditions are right, if we could move forward with the refunding. Currently, the market conditions aren't really in a position that we'd want to do this, but we just want to get authorization so when it returns, we can.
Anybody have any questions for Tammy or comments on this issue?
Commissioner, can I simply comment that this is in reference to a request directive direct from the National Park Service? As obviously, we are, we consult with them and talk to them about what makes sense, and we're simply pursuing that policy.
Okay, can we have a motion in a second, please, if there's no comments?
Zimmerman's motions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Agenda Item Number Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstent, any abstentions? Okay, who's trying to chat? Okay, Fred just, actually, that was 12 minutes ago Fred signed off. Okay. All right, Agenda Item Number Six. Back for round two. This is the Letter of Agreement between Bi-State Development and the Jerry Costello Group for Consulting Services. Am I the only one getting that feedback?
No.
No. We're.
Okay, just, I'm not a Zoom expert, but I think, make sure your cell phones are away from your laptops. Hey, Mary, I saw you on earlier. Is this your agenda item you want to discuss?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good morning. How you doing?
I'm doing good. Good morning, commissioners. We are requesting referral to the Board of Commissioners for approval, a letter of agreement between Bi-State Development and the Jerry Costello Group. It's for services for the St. Louis Regional Freightway and the Executive Office. It is a non-competitive procurement or sole source funding for this is split between the Freightway and Bi-State Development Services. The Jerry Costello Group will provide strategic advice and planning. These efforts helped advocate and secure funding for $600 million for the Interstate 27 project between Missouri and Illinois, also $220 million for the Merchant's Bridge between Missouri and Illinois. And recently, he's helping us coordinate negotiation discussions with Gulfstream, the airport's largest tenant, and he's also providing services to President Talby Roach and staff regarding the CARES Act.
Does anyone have any comments or questions on this?
I discussed this during the last time this came up, and I just want to make sure that Talby and Mary understand that I'm supportive of engaging in consultants to help with this work, but I think you need to really drill down on the scope of work and the deliverables. So I would strongly encourage that you beef up that portion so that you both have, all parties know what the expectations are, and the Board can determine whether or not those expectations are being met.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think you were on last time, Mary, but we had, we had a long conversation about this, and actually, in the interim, just to be fully transparent with my colleagues, Congressman Costello called me with a very nice conversation. He walked me through all of his efforts on behalf of Bi-State and the Freightway, and it was good to know, but I conveyed to him at least the substance of what we discussed last time, that, you know, at least me personally, you know, we take our oversight role pretty seriously, and it would help if, and he volunteered to do so, if he either submits a annual or biannual report or stops by a meeting to speak when it's safe to do so, just to give us a little more context here, because, you know, I totally don't think they're just sitting on their hands, not doing anything, but it's, it's really tough, like Rose said, to evaluate, you know, what, what's happening, what's not happening, and what we're getting for our money. And, you know, I think lobbying is a necessary aspect to this, but I would also just add that, you know, it's given the financial constraints that were conveyed to us, I'm a lot more hesitant about spending on certain, certain things, just with that. So those are my concerns. The congressman was, as he always is, very, very professional and did walk me through all of the efforts he's, he's been making. So that was good, and I encourage him to convey this at a, at a future board meeting. So that was just, just to make sure, convey to all of you that that conversation occurred, and I wanted to be transparent with that.
Commissioner Simmons.
If I can briefly comment. We, I did meet with, with Mary this morning to flush out that agreement that, at Commissioner Winmiller's recommendation, I think it makes perfect sense, managing consultants and lobbyists, especially with deliverables, I think is a very reasonable expectation from this Board and something that we need to do. So I, I am committed to doing that, and we'll move forward on that. And of course, if, if, if the congressman is available to schedule at the Board's discretion to come in and briefly go over that, I will say that our CARES legislation, I hadn't envisioned that, obviously, a year ago when we had this, but when I requested Jerry's help for that, he was instrumental. Those kind of connections to secure, and I would note, $142 million of CARES Act is one of those critical aspects. So you do your best on deliverables, but of course, the world shows up, as I think we all know.
Any other comments or questions on this specific agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Simmons, I just think that with what we're going through at this unprecedented time in our life, that we're gonna need every voice we can get to make sure that our interest is protected. In dealing with the congressman in the past, I've always found him to be easily available, and I think there'd be no problem with getting him to, to participate in the future if we requested that. So I fully support and would hope my colleagues would agree with that we definitely need that, that voice speaking for us.
Okay, unless anybody has anything else to add, I'm gonna ask for a motion and for second. And then Myra, can we, just because this was a close vote last time, can we do a, can we do a roll call vote on this one, just for clarification purposes?
Simmons makes the motion.
Galladay, second.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Yep.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Holman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gully.
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Aye.
And Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
All right, Agenda Item Number Seven is a contract modification for the extension of a contract with the Harlan Company for installation of the Brentwood Bus Garage Oil and Water Separator. Is Jessica available to comment on this?
Good morning, commissioners. We're here today to request a 120-day extension on a contract with the Harlan Company for construction and replacement of our oil-water separator at the Brentwood Metro Bus Facility. This equipment is necessary for environmental purposes and to bring us into compliance with MSD requirements. We have previously requested two 180-day extensions for the Harlan Company. Through no fault of Bi-State or the Harlan Company, we had not yet been able to secure a permit from the city of Richmond Heights. We delivered a design in February that we believe will allow us to move through construction with a permit from Richmond Heights, so we are requesting this extension through September 30th, 2020. Any questions on this item?
Hearing no questions or comments, can we please have a motion in a second?
Aye, so move. Second.
Second.
Agenda Item Number Seven, there's been a motion to approve, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? On Agenda Item Number Eight, we're gonna go back to Jessica for the Contract Award for the Project Support Services by Center for Transportation and the Environment.
Thank you. We are requesting approval of a contract with Center for Transportation and the Environment, or CTE, for a not-to-exceed amount of $128,150. Metro partnered with CTE on to date four low-no or lower-no emission vehicle applications to the Federal Transit Administration. Two of those applications have been successful, and we have one application pending. CTE's work has been in advising Metro on the structure and function of our battery electric bus program. That includes battery type and sizes for the vehicles, as well as equipment requirements at our Brentwood Metro Bus Facility and our Broadway and Taylor Transit Center. This work is critical for launching our battery electric program this year. Are there any questions on this item?
Any questions from commissioners or any additional comments from staff? Hearing none, I will request a motion in a second to approve Agenda Item Number Eight.
So moved. Or second.
I'll let whoever's doing the minutes figure that out, but there was certainly a motion in a second. So all those in favor of approving Agenda Item Number Eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We next have Agenda Item Number Nine, which is a contract award with WSP. Jessica, could you walk us through this one, please?
Certainly. So Metro typically operates with a general engineering contractor or GEC, and the purpose of this contract is to minimize the time associated with procuring smaller design services. Our current general engineering contract, and this proposed contract, has a cap on task orders of $150,000. We're typically spending about half a million dollars a year right now on our GEC contract. We have before you today a request to approve a new contract with WSP for a period of three years with up to two option years for a total not-to-exceed amount over a five-year period of $2.5 million. Are there any questions on this item?
Do any commissioners have any questions, or any staff have anything to add to this issue? Hearing none, I will request a motion in a second to approve Agenda Item Number Nine.
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item Number Nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Agenda Item Number Ten is an emergency contract award for Vobis, I guess if I'm saying incorrectly, Vobis-Sanus LLC for employee temperature screening. It says here, I should refer to Dave Tobin to explain this one.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Good morning. In response to COVID-19 pandemic, senior leadership initiated an employee safety program to take employee temperatures when they report to work. Organizational effectiveness was asked to step in and source a third-party vendor that had clinical resources available to do that. We did so on March 18th. We found three vendors and awarded or brought on board Vobis-Sanus, also known as Bright Star Care. They began the week of March 23rd. You will see that in the paper, through March, through May 3rd, we had expended $421,000 in costs for this vendor, and right now, we are expending roughly about $77,000 per week to run this program. While we realize that this is not a sustainable program, we are in the process of sourcing a technological solution to replace these manual screeners. What we're doing is asking for approval for you to refer to the full Board, the opportunity to allow the President and CEO to continue to fund this initiative. We believe we need about $746,000 to run it through the end of May, but again, as I mentioned, our weekly spend is at about $77,000. So we're asking again for approval to have the President and CEO authorized to continue funding the current employee temperature screening process as needed while providing cost updates to the Board. Are there any questions?
I have one. Dave, how long before you think you'll have an app or a technological support? That's the first question, and the second is, I just want clarification that this is not coming out of general operating budget. It's coming from the CARES Act.
And I.
It is being.
Thank you, David. I'm sorry for interrupting. So you may be, for instance, Item 11 has to do, which will be too in the next few minutes, is a, is part of the technological solution, so Mr. Giassi will be presenting on that. Additionally, all of this expenditure is qualifying expense under CARES Act in typically applicable to the emergency funding provision, and so that is how we are tracking and intend on using CARES money to fund.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. That was my question as well.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would request a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Agenda Item Number Ten signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? I think, Agenda Item Number 11, I guess is somewhat related, as Talby said, but it's an emergency contract award to DH Pace Company for employee temperature screening gateways. It looks like we might have a, is Dave gonna handle this one, or is Andrew gonna handle this one?
Mr. Giassi, sir.
Giassi, okay.
Okay, can everybody hear my audio, okay?
Yes.
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 Good morning, commissioners. So again, as we start to move forward toward our pandemic response, one of the big factors is building resilience in preparation for the new normal. We are looking and seeking a technological solution of which is going to be a temperature gate portal. And again, this device is a non-contact temperature monitoring. It's got very accurate results down to 0.1 to 0.3 degrees Celsius, and it basically utilizes two pairs of sensors, 43 inches, 60 inches, from the users, and the devices would be mounted at each. And the devices would be mounted at each location. So this contract right now is seeking seven units to be delivered on-site. We are in the final stages of finalizing mounting locations, wiring requirements, and developing the procedure that goes along with it. As you pass through the unit, it will trigger an alarm if your temperature exceeds 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit. And again, the good news behind this is they are temporary or can be permanently mounted, but they also can be coupled as a metal detection system. If after this pandemic response is over, we would like to utilize that feature that is also built in. So again, this is how we're going to move forward reshaping our strategy for business continuity. Are there any questions?
Why 104 as opposed to say 103? Just curious.
104. So, so that's a, that's a typical medical condition that suggests that you've got it, it's suggestive of a fever. And so again, CDC, a lot of the regulatory guidelines that we're reviewing as part of our pandemic plan require that temperature threshold as a, as a nation standard. So we've set ours at that for right now to comply with those guidelines.
I have a question. It really goes more to what are you doing in addition to temperature checks? Is there anything that employees need to? You know, there are all kinds of apps now that you actually just check in every day. Is that also either being considered or being used? And it checks your overall health?
Yeah, so some of the things we're doing as part of our COVID safety plan, we've got a separate subcommittee that is looking at a long-term technological solution, one of which is going to be a temperature portal, others are going to be a wellness app. Again, the committee meets weekly, and we are discussing other thermal cameras, other solutions to use in combination with, with the overall portion of our employee safety for temperature screenings. Other items that we're doing as part of our COVID response plan, and I think Jessica's going to be giving a good briefing on our COVID pandemic plan, but we've got thermal cameras, social distancing guidelines, hand sanitizer. Everything is going to be part of this big plan, COVID-19 training, that we are kicking off. And temperature screening is just one layer of that protection that we're implementing.
Thank you so much.
Well.
Yeah, I would just have one comment. We discussed a little bit at the security meeting how, how this fits in the overall strategy, but, but I would just add, this is kind of more directed towards Talby and our leadership, but, you know, please over-report on these issues. The board is really interested in this, and we just want to make sure, you know, don't feel like you're inundating us or overloading us. This is such a fluid situation, and if we need to get on the phone with you, if we need to call a special meeting, you're, you're not bothering us with this at all. So that would just be, appreciate that update, and if we need them more in the interim, sometimes we don't meet for four or six weeks, and if there's a significant change in that meantime, you're not hesitate to contact us.
Not noted, Commissioner.
Yeah, do we, can we get a motion in a second for Agenda Item Number 11?
Simmons makes the motion.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Agenda Item Number 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? It looks like Agenda Item Number 12 is in agreement with the St. Clair County Transit District. Kevin Scott?
Yes, can you hear me okay, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, could you turn up the volume a little bit? I don't know if it's just me, but...
About now.
Yeah, it works.
Okay. This is simply a consolidation, or a proposed consolidation of secondary police services in St. Clair County. So just to give you a little history, since the 90s, by-state development has provided for a secondary police detail at Fifth and Missouri. And recently, over the past few years, the Transit District expanded that and has been administering that directly to College, Swansea Memorial, East Riverfront, and they're doing a floating train patrol. And the memorandum of understanding really is asking for your authorization just to combine the two under by-state secondary policing structure. We will use onboarded, secondary, part-time St. Clair County deputies to do this, as we currently do. There's no anticipation of changing the locations or the deployments. At this time, this is, the deployment strategy and locations is based on the commander of the Metro Link Detail in St. Clair County. And so we're just offering a way to clean this up and consolidate the two programs that are now separate. The MOU also allows for the reimbursement of the cost to man those additional locations at College, Swansea Memorial, East Riverfront, and the floating train patrol. We would invoice the Transit District for that. So that's simply just a cleanup of what really needs to be one collaboration.
Any questions from Commissioners, or additional comments?
I have a question. How do you identify the, the locations? And how do your selected locations compare to where the crime incidents are highest?
Well, the locations, the locations at this juncture were based on recommendations, the ones in the St. Clair County Transit District. So College, Swansea Memorial, East Riverfront, and then the floating train patrol were based on the collaboration between leadership, Metro Link, a law enforcement leadership in the Transit District. And they still concur that these are the best locations. But in the future, we have expanded, you know, our ability to capture that, to use analytics to capture data to evaluate these locations. And so our anticipation is that these won't change anytime soon. However, if we identify an issue, and we need to make alterations to this deployment, we will do that in conjunction with the, the leadership of the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department Metro Link Detail, as well as consulting with the Transit District itself.
Is there a logic model for how the data informs a decision that can be shared?
Yeah, so on a, on a monthly basis, we receive the data from the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department, and also our Metro Link deployed staff on what we deal with at certain locations, the types of reports we take, things like that. All of that is fed into a database, and so we're able to highlight high-response areas or problemed areas where we need to reallocate more human assets.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get a motion in second for Agenda Item Number 12, unless there's additional comments?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons abstains.
Okay, please have the minutes reflect that. Agenda Item Number 13 is a sole-source contract award, and we need Greg Smith and Kerry Kincaid to speak on this topic.
Greg, are you there? Can you all hear me? This is Kerry Kincaid.
Yeah.
All right. Well, good morning Commissioners and other panelists. I would like to say that, if possible, I want to be where Commissioner Zimmerman is for the next meeting. It looks fantastic. So on this topic...
It's my backyard, it's my backyard deck. I'm in exile back here, but it's a nice day, so it works.
It's beautiful, beautiful. So I, I guess Greg is gone, I don't know. He was on, so I will cover this. So we have a number of, if you, the paper's in front of you, I'm sure. So in 2013, we sort of changed our sole-sourcing approach with the Board of Directors. Previously to that, every sole-source opportunity over $100,000 needed to be brought before the board individually. As you know, we employ a lot of software and hardware on an ongoing basis that requires, you know, depending on the solution, a sole-source contract to get yearly maintenance and support from those vendors. So in 2013, we elected to start bringing to the board the high-dollar items kind of en masse that we know are going to occur during that year. So this is a, this request today is to have you all discuss and approve before we're to the board, if you will, those various high-dollar items that we know are coming. So out of our budget of roughly $3 million in, in kind of regular hardware and software maintenance, we have six items that kind of float to the top in terms of larger dollars. You'll see those in the paper. They are Cronos, which is our employee time clock system, Oracle, which is our financial and HR system, Scheiden-Bachmann, which is our Fairbox cash collection system, and Jero, who will, is handling our operator dispatch functions. Tableau, which is a newer item to the list, is a BI, business intelligence reporting and analytics tool. And we are using that quite a bit right now to, to handle operational reporting metrics, and it's proving to be quite valuable. And then Trapeze, the kind of large dog on the list, if you will. We field a number of systems from Trapeze, all very firmly embedded in our operational approach. So all the way from the vehicle location system to the route planning system and the paratransit dispatching system. So it, it's quite a undertaking. So with that in mind, again, what we're asking for is a recommendation on forwarding to the board for approval these planned FY '21 sole sources. And I'm open to questions at this time.
Any questions to Greg, or any, oh, sorry, any questions to, not Greg, who else?
Kerry.
Kerry, that's right. Any questions on Item Number 13? I will then request a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Agenda Item Number 13, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Agenda Item Number 14, Metro Transit's Agency Safety Plan. We're going back to Andrew Giassi.
Good morning Commissioners. Here before you today to obtain approval from this committee for Metro's, Metro Transit's Agency Safety Plan that meets and is responsive to the FTA's Public Transportation Agency Safety Program, also known as the P-TAS. These requirements were set forth by 49 CFR Part 673. A little background before I give you the general requirements. MAP 21 amended federal transit law by requiring a new public transportation safety program. Again, this program must include a safety plan of all public transportation systems that receive federal transit funds. Metro is required to certify that it has a safety plan that meets this requirement by July 20th of 2020. General requirements are that it must have an approval by the, by Metro's accountable executive and Board of Commissioners. We will designate a chief safety officer in the document. It also must contain processes of Metro's safety management system, which includes a policy statement, processes for safety risk management, safety assurance, and safety promotion. Must include an employee reporting program, and must include performance targets based on the National Safety Transportation Plan performance targets. I'm here before you today to recommend operations can be approved and refer this to the Board of Commissioners for approval at the next meeting. Again, there is no funding request being made with this action. Metro's Office of Safety will review and operate the plan under a principle of continuous improvement. Again, as we see new changes in the organization, procedures, or equipment, the plan will be updated annually and sent before you for approval. Are there any questions?
One second, guys. Sorry about that. Had to switch locations. All right, can I get a motion in a second to approve that Agenda Item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Let's move on to the next Agenda Item then. Which is apologies. It looks like 15 through 19 are just reports from the Internal Audit Department, and would just be informational only. So if anyone has any questions, it looks like Angie Steikoff should be available. But if not, I think, you know, if you have any questions, please state it now. If not, we'll just move on to number 20.
So are we ready for number 20? So we're saying?
Let's do it, number 20.
So this is our annual report on the investment performance of our 401K plan, the pension plan trust, and the OPEB trust investments. Starting with the 401K plan, at the end of the year, we had $65.8 million in assets, up from 12, up 12.5 with investments and contributions from the previous year. Our investments have basically been consistent by our participants as in prior years, so no significant change there. By the way, 2019 was a very good year for our investments. And I can't say the same thing right now, but 2019 is a good year. Moving on to our salary pension plan, assets are now at $81.4 million, up 13.7 since the beginning of the year. Our investment earnings for the year were 17%. Our targeted actuarial return was 7%. That's a considerable, considerable good situation. IBW plan assets were at $6.3 million, and earnings were 23.1%, as opposed to our target of 7%. Our 788 pension plan, total assets were $150.9 million. The portfolio gained 12.2% as opposed to our 7% target. And then our OPEB trust, assets at the end of the year were 38.7, a gain of 18.7, 18.6% as opposed to our target of 6, 6.5. So bottom line, it was a good year for our investments. We have a report on the first quarter of 2020. It was not nearly as good, and I think things are transitioning again in the second quarter. We'll bring that update to you at the end of the year. Any questions? This is the information we're focusing on.
Yeah, thanks, thanks a lot, Chuck. If there's no questions, we can hop on to the next item, number 21, which is also informational on financial statements with Mark Bago.
Helps if you take mute off. Okay. In order of brevity, I'm just going to focus on three units today. A lot of what we've talked about previously is still continuing into the third quarter. The first one is the regional freightway. We're still waiting on contracts, so there's no revenue. So it's showing a loss of $306,000 through March year-to-date. The other unit I'd like to talk about is the riverfront attractions or the boats. They have a revenue of $1.9 million. They were closed as of March 16th, expenses of $2 million, so they have a loss of about $135,000 year-to-date. In addition to being affected by the regional shutdown and closures this spring, they also had flooding back in the fall, which also affected the prior fiscal year-end. So if you look on the balance sheet, the money that they owe to other by-state units, that kind of, I owe back to the by-state bank, as I refer to it. that kind of, I owe back to the by-state bank as I refer to it, um, December was about $650,000. Um, here we are three months later in March and it's doubled that, it's about 1.3, 1.4 million. So they didn't really have the cash reserves coming out of the winter to cover their own expenses, so that really had to be borrowed, uh, from executive services. And, uh, so even though they're having $135,000 loss on the books, they are more in debt to the agency for about 1.4 million. Uh, the third unit to talk about that I think is key at this point is Metro Transit, and I think Jessica's going to go into a lot more detail, but we have revenue of 229 million. Um, passengers are down 6%. The passenger revenue is down 6% if you look for the quarter, but if you look just at the month of March, which isn't broken out in that packet, passenger revenue was off about 30% just for that month. Um, we have expenses of 230 million, so that gives us a net income of about a $1 million loss. Um, and that's kind of where we stand. Uh, the CARES Act was brought up, and at this point, we've incurred about 4.1 million in operating expenses that we can ask for reimbursement from the CARES Act. Uh, we should be able to start drawing that down in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the other couple of things I just want to touch on and then I will hand off is what's not in your packet, and that is the March month of April. Um, when we look at sales taxes in April, the county was off about 9%. The city was off about 13, so that's collections. So the collections were down about nine and a half percent. And again, we're not seeing the full impact of March yet. We won't see that until the May report. So that's just, uh, the kind of the beginning. So we would expect another drop when we get the next sales tax report. And when we look at passenger revenue for April, just the dollar amount, we budgeted 3.1 million and it came in at about 725,000, uh, so a significant drop. But you also have to remember, and I think Jessica may speak to this, that that is not just passenger loss, we were having people board in the back for safety reasons, so we were not collecting all the fees on non-MetroLink modes. So those, that's all I have, and I'm open to questions.
Can I add one thing, uh, please, Commissioner? Uh, that is with, in regards to the freight district, I have successfully negotiated with, um, uh, with, for instance, our electeds, an understanding of, of 100,000 a year, um, obviously from Madison. So, Commissioner Zimmerman and Cox did in that. I now have that suc- successfully negotiated with the other three, um, entities. So that'll mean that just for, from an accounting standpoint, we have a clear understanding of how to handle the freight jurisdiction, so it does not have to be handled in this loan capacity, uh, through executive services. Um, and so I will be, uh, issuing that, um, memo as we move through, uh, obviously, uh, FY21, um, uh, negotiations as well. So I just wanted to note that to the Commissioners. Thank you.
Yeah, Toby, could, could you circulate that just so I can show the people in Madison County, because I'm sure they're interested in how the financials are divided on that. So thank you. And thanks, thanks, Mark, for keeping it succinct. Um, unless somebody else has a comment or question, we can move on to agenda item number 22, which is our Treasurers Report with Tammy Fulbright.
Sorry about that, I was having trouble getting it off mute too. Um, so if you look at the first quarter, um, of, or the, actually, our third quarter and fiscal year, we were at 260 million, um, consistently, uh, by-state directed and trustee-directed funds. If you look towards the early part of the quarter, you'll see we're at about one and a half percent in our earnings, and that declined to closer to 1% by the time we got to March. Um, as you know, the Fed, uh, reduced rates again, so we know that our, um, average return on our investments is going to go down substantially as that rate's now at zero to a quarter percent. And we have had some decline in our cash, um, balance also because, as Mark mentioned, we have been paying out, um, expenses related to COVID. We also are waiting for, um, the FTA funding of the 16 million to come in, which we're hopeful that we'll get by 6:30. In addition, um, our new, as we refunded our 2019 bonds, we were required to post six months of interest and principal, um, at the beginning of each, um, six-month period. So in April, we had to post those funds also. So, um, as we move forward, we know that, um, we will be getting reimbursements from the FTA, so our cash balances should come back up, um, and that's kind of where we are today. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't have any questions. Is there any other questions or comments, uh, for Tammy before we move on? All right, hearing none, let's move on to item number 23, the procurement report, and it should be Greg Smith on this one.
Yes, it is. Good morning. Uh, second quarter non-competitive procurements totaled $2 million or 6.2% of the total purchase order commitment volume of 32 million, which gave us a 12-month rolling average of 11.1%. Uh, as I, we try to hang, stay around 10%, so very close. On the third quarter, non-competitive procurement total was 7.5 million of a total volume of 55.6 million, which brought us to 12.5% rolling average. Uh, just a footnote, that third quarter was the, uh, issuance of the purchase orders for the electric buses, uh, as well as the infrastructure and the, uh, purchase order to G4S for security. So those four items alone accounted for about 50% of that total, uh, procurement of 55.6 million. So that's the reason for the bump. And that's it. Any questions?
Hearing none, I'm going to move on to agenda item number 24, our operations report, and we're going back to Jessica.
Good morning again, Commissioners. I realize we are pretty far into this meeting, so I, but I do think it important to spend a few minutes talking about the state of our operations, our financial status with respect to the transit enterprise and our COVID response and recovery plan. So much of what we'll review today will be through the lens of COVID response and recovery. Myra did share, uh, this operations report with you on last night. I apologize for the delay. We thought it important to get you our April figures, which are hot off the press. So just a few highlights. To date, relative to the beginning of the COVID crisis in mid-March, our MetroLink ridership is down about 70%. Metro Bus is down about 50%, and Call Ride is down 46%. With respect to our budget, transit in the first 10 months year-to-date of this fiscal year, we are about 6.5% below budget. We'll have some of the contractual wage increases hitting us at the end of the fiscal year, so that, uh, gap will narrow a bit as we approach the end of June. Our passenger revenue in the 10-month year-to-date inclusive of April is down 10.5%. Now, I anticipate, this is a rough estimate, that we'll end the fiscal year about 20% low on passenger revenue, and that amounts to about $7.7 million. Again, pretty rough estimate, not knowing exactly how our customers are going to respond. A couple of notable things about ridership. Of course, Metro Bus, uh, has shown less elasticity in demand in response to COVID. And when we benchmark Metro Transit against our peers nationwide, I want to note that our total ridership loss is not nearly as steep as many other large urban transit systems. And so that suggests to us that we're carrying on a regular basis a larger number of essential workers who are dependent on our transit system for all of their trip purposes. So that, that's an important thing to consider, and we're bearing that in mind as we recover with our operating plan. We briefed you a couple of times in the last, uh, 10 weeks since we began our emergency operations about our COVID response. Again, we remain guided by three principles. Number one is to preserve the safety of our employees first and then our customers, to ensure that we're providing meaningful and reliable service, recognizing that demand for our service has changed markedly since mid-March, and finally, preserving our capacity to recover as we are now as the threat of the COVID-19 crisis wanes. We have implemented a number of proactive measures to help ensure the safety of our team members, pushing those measures out as personal protective equipment or materials and supplies have come online. You heard earlier from Mr. Giassi about our temperature screening portals. You are aware of the personal protective equipment that we are providing to our employees. We are now also requiring all customers using Metro Transit wear a face covering. I'm happy to report that we are seeing very strong compliance of that face covering requirement. We did a blitz in the days leading up to and on the first day of that requirement, which was Monday, May 11th. We have equipped our frontline team members, including our transit service managers and transit security specialists, with supplies of masks so that in the event they encounter customers who do not have a face covering, they're able to distribute that. We've taken delivery of some mask supplies from our partners across the region to help ensure that our customers have a steady supply of masks. And I'm pleased to report, we are very focused on our supply chain for personal protective equipment, and we're in a solid state right now, uh, in terms of keeping our team members in masks, gloves, sanitizer and disinfectant spray. We also began rear door boarding. You'll remember, we talked about this in our March 20th meeting, we began rear door boarding and temporarily suspended fare collection on Metro Bus and Metro Link on March 21st. We are preparing to resume fare collection on Metro Bus on Monday, June 1st. We are confident moving in this direction, only bolstered by a stabilization and a reduction in positive COVID cases amongst the three jurisdictions that we serve. We must have mask compliance for our operators and our customers. We also installed protective polycarbonate shields onboard all of our Metro Buses that did not come, equipped with the shield from the original manufacturer. To the extent that we can, we're reducing capacity on our vehicles, but I want to note, we are not able to achieve six feet of social distancing aboard our Metro Buses. The demand for our service relative to our capacity to supply bus trips is not sufficient to allow six feet of distancing. I'll talk in a minute about our various, uh, permutations of Metro Bus service that, that we have rolled out. We're also doing a tremendous amount of messaging, and this is being quarterbacked by our safety team and our marketing and communications teams, reminding our team members and our customers of everything that we need them to do to keep themselves and the people around them safer. Our entire COVID recovery and response plan is benchmarked in data and recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control. We're also keeping in very close contact with our peers across the industry, and when we identify strategies that can keep our customers or teams safer, we're acting swiftly to implement them. I want to shift and talk a little bit about the operational impact, so you see where we've been with service and where we're going through our recovery stages. We have had to date two formal service changes. First, on Monday, March 23rd, we reduced Metro Link and Metro Bus to a weekday level of service. So for Metro Bus, that looked like about 73% of base service, and for Metro Link, we reduced it about 18, 18% from base service, about 78% of base. On April 20th, we implemented another service change for Metro Bus only, at which we began operating 63% of our base service. Now, that's our current formal service level. We have structured this service, though, such that as our team members return to work, we have been able to deploy more service, focusing first on those markets that have the highest demand. Unfortunately, between March and April, we did temporarily suspend service on some routes. Uh, some of those routes had very low ridership because the businesses or markets that they primarily served were temporarily suspended. We shifted some routes from Metro Bus service to Call Ride and initially to, who is a paratransit or van subcontractor to us, so that we could use those smaller vehicles to provide some credible level of service. We also expanded our Metro Connect pilot program with Lyft to include geography so that we could get service in some of these lighter demand markets so that customers could access the fixed route system. Right now, we are continuing to add trips. We've got vehicles staged in select places across the system to respond in real time to surges in ridership. We're carrying a much heavier-than-normal, what we call extra board, so that we can be somewhat flexible in our deployment of service. It is a very dynamic time right now for both demand and service, and I want to commend the Metro Bus team, beginning first and foremost with our operators who are on the frontline and carrying so much of the burden of the COVID crisis on their shoulders, and then to the teams who are working to deploy the service in real time. Now, Metro Call Ride is a demand-responsive service, of course, so, uh, we ebb and flow as demand does. Call Ride is down about 46% in terms of their ridership. We've been able to fulfill all the ADA requirements for service, and the Call Ride team is also supporting Metro Bus operations as well as relief efforts. Initially, they were delivering supplies on their split shifts. Right now, they are sewing fabric masks for us at the main shop. Those are being distributed across the team, so this really is a, a full port press across Metro Transit to support our COVID efforts. As we move through recovery, we really are inhibited, of course, by funding, uh, primarily available operator and other personnel resources and customer demand. I want to give you a snapshot of what team member availability looks like. We're tracking our absenteeism on a daily basis for all of our teams. At the height of our COVID-related absenteeism, and COVID-related absenteeism could include an employee who self-quarantines, is referred to quarantine by by-state development because of a potential exposure, they are caring for a loved one impacted by COVID, or they themselves are impacted by COVID, or they're caring for children without access to school or childcare. In mid-April, at peak, we had just under 400 daily COVID-related absences across by-state development. That number is declining, and yesterday, we had 166 COVID-related absences. The return to work is enabling us to provide more service. So we're engaged now very actively in our recovery plan. We anticipate that at this moment in time, we have moved fully through the de-escalation of our services. We've stabilized, and now we're beginning to climb out of that. The recovery is going to take a lot longer than the ramp-down process, that is for sure. We don't know yet exactly what ridership is going to look like, but we know that we're going to be negatively impacted by ridership demand in the months to come. I'm, I'm encouraged that our team members are coming back to work, but we do expect much higher absenteeism rates for many months to come. Uh, we are also have temporarily suspended some, not all, of our recruiting and training efforts, so we're a little bit in the hole when it comes to replenishing our bus and van operator workforce. So our recovery planning, which is underway now, uh, for all teams across by-state development, is focused on a measured response. I don't expect full restoration of all Metro Transit services to occur until spring of 2021. Our next scheduled service change is June 1st of 2020. I'm sorry, June 15th of 2020. At June 15th, we're going to be adding frequency to, uh, a total of 20 of our busiest routes. 14 routes will return to having 15- to 20-minute frequencies, and that's especially important because these are the routes where we're having crowding issues today. We're going to continue our Lyft service, and St. Clair County Transit District will be extending their flyer program to replace one of their routes, and we will also expand our MetroLink service on Monday, June 15th. Now, June 1st, the return of fare collection is a major milestone for us. We're going to roll out a revised fare collection approach. We are not going to distribute paper transfers to customers and collect them back because of the potential exposure associated with that transaction. So Metro Bus will offer one ride only for cash payment. We're also working very quickly to launch a mobile ticketing program that would allow us to access one-ride tickets on a mobile device that would be visually validated as we move through the process, uh, toward eventual electronic validation of a mobile ticketing measure. Our proposals for that were actually due at 10:00 AM this morning. We have asked vendors for an approach that they could stand up by early June. I look forward to reporting back on progress on mobile ticketing. I expect in the summer, we'll return Call Ride fare collection. We're working right now to change the fare box on Call Ride so that we can limit contact on that mode. We're also looking at mobile and account-based solutions for fare collection on Call Ride. After June, the next service change is August, and at that point, I expect to begin restoring to regular Metro Bus service some of those routes that were suspended and adding additional frequency. And again, dependent on demand- And again, dependent on demand and available personnel, November would be a near-final push. And then in March 2021, we expect to have completed implementation of St. Clair County's Transit Vision 2021. And we also expect to be prepared for summer of 2021, and we are hopeful that demand would return to normal for spring, summer of 2021, inclusive of special events. Now, we are going to have to shift our marketing and our service design efforts to deliberately restore ridership because demand is just not going to look like what it has in the past. That includes monitoring schools and businesses for reopenings, trying to focus on markets, including developing a strong employer-based pass program and working closely with employers, as we have been doing for a while now, to ensure that we are meeting their needs. And in 2021, I also anticipate rolling out a revised fare policy and fare collection strategies that will make it more convenient for customers to seamlessly plan, book, and pay for their trip. This concludes my operations report. We've shared a lot of information with you. Can I answer any questions about our operations or COVID response and recovery?
Jessica, I just want to say that was a great report, and I really appreciate the work that you and your team has done. Great job.
Thank you.
Yes, Jessica. My question is, are they required, or will you guys require them to wear masks?
So Commissioner, at this time, we are requiring all customers and all team members to wear a face covering. We have not yet determined the date when that requirement would be relaxed. We are queuing off of recommendations from the CDC and the caseloads in the city of the county and St. Clair County. So for right now, it's everyone in masks, and that's a really important step to keep us all safer.
Good. Thank you.
Jessica, what type of work is being done to re-initiate the affair on June 1st? What kind of, how are you getting that word out?
So we'll be doing so starting today with our marketing and communications team. Actually, we started back the first week in May. We announced that fares would begin being collected. We've got signs across the system. We put a single set of signage and information up announcing the mask requirement on May 11th and the fare requirement on June 1st. And today, we'll start pushing out information about the slight changes to fare policy, including that one-ride piece of it. So we're using our social media channels, audible announcements across the system, as well as physical signage at all of our stations. We're also communicating with our vendors and our pass partners to ensure that they've got those June passes in hand, and we're all ready to go.
Very good. Thank you for that thorough report.
Thank you.
Any other questions? With none, I will hand the floor over to Talby for item number 25, his report.
Very good. Good morning, everyone. And first, I just want to just report to everybody that I generally do have a concern about my staffing exhaustion, quite frankly. So since January and the COVID response, I've had staff, including a good part of the transit staff and Jessica and everybody across with our EOC meetings and so on. Basically, I have a staff that's been working six and seven days since January, and I'm just a little concerned about it right now. But I want to commend them, as I've gotten no pushback whatsoever, and I really can continue to commend their action. I just want to bring that to your attention. For instance, please note, normally, we have three, four service changes in a whole year, and we've had three or four service changes in a couple of months. So this requires the kind of work where certainly, under COVID, a lot of businesses have gone down in their workload. We've actually gone up. This includes not only staff here, but of course, our driver corp, as we have a lot who are answering the call. I want to mention that we are moving very, very positively on FY21 approval through all fundings. So for instance, I will go through first reading with the city of St. Louis tomorrow. That's actually very, very positive. I also have full approval from St. Louis County. So I am hopeful that for the first time in eight to 10 years, we may have our appropriation passed through St. Louis County before the July 1st. This is an extraordinary sign of the kind of working relationship we have been able to develop with our partners in an ongoing and continued basis. There, of course, are adjustments to that FY21 having to do with how we are projecting COVID CARES funding to be injected. And right now, we are planning on reductions across all three partners of a 20% reduction, and then that would be supplemented through the CARES Act right now in the fiscal year '21. Of course, 20% is a projection. It could be 22, it could be 18. But I'm working with all of those partners to warn them, of course, that we need to be looking at revenue, and also, I need to keep that door open for Jessica and her operations and planning team to advise our partners, where are we going with ridership? This will continue to be a dynamic environment. I think what we were shown, unfortunately, through, we had positive ridership, and of course, January and February, which now seems many years ago, it was not, but positive ridership in those two months, which was the first time in 42 months. Now, I want to mention the reason what that was telling us is through Metro Reimagine, some of the fundamental redesigns made sense. There were some aspects of that change that clearly talked to what our customers want. So we now use that principle and advance it as we move into later in 2021, after we've seen what are the effects of COVID. So that's a difficult tasking, but indeed, a very positive one. I wanted to keep my comments brief simply because we have a very full agenda. I very much appreciate your time and dedication. I have commented to the staff, particularly in the Emergency Operations Center, all of the great support we've gotten from the Board of Commissioners. And so staff has certainly heard that. I will continue to do so, and I want to thank you for your time, and I will conclude my report at this point.
Thank you, Talby. Any questions or comments for Talby? Okay, it looks like we're on to unscheduled business, which we do have one thing that came in late that needs our attention, and it's a, looks like a bid issue that Jessica would like to walk us through.
Commissioners, thank you. This is a contract award request for signal work at our Newstead Crossing. This is part of the Central West End construction project that's being accomplished in partnership with Washington University. And because of procurement and FTA rules, which are very important, we received a single bid for this work, and so we're bringing it back to you for approval because we're having to ship from sealed bid to negotiation with the vendor. Now, this is the vendor that also performed our signal work at our recent Cortex MetroLink construction, so we have full confidence in this vendor's capacity to perform the signal work at the Newstead Crossing. Newstead Crossing, by the way, is just east of our Central West End MetroLink station and is part of that overall station revitalization effort. We're walking this in this morning rather than waiting until our next committee meeting so that we can ensure that that project continues as scheduled. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that explanation, Jessica. I would ask for a motion in a second on this added agenda item.
So move. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Please have the minutes reflect that abstention. Myra, do you mind calling out the upcoming future meeting dates?
Yes, Commissioners, the next scheduled meeting will be held by the Security Subcommittee Meeting. That will be on Thursday, June 11th. The next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be held on Friday, June 26th. Currently, there are no scheduled meetings in the month of July. We will resume meetings in August, on August 13th, by the Security Subcommittee, and then followed by an Operations Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting on August 21st.
Thank you. It looks like we do need to adjourn into executive session, and I would need a motion that this committee go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters, as permitted under By-State Development Board Policy Chapter 10, subsection 10.080 D1 Legal, D2 Real Estate, and D10 Audit.
So move.
Second.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gully?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach? Commissioner Holman? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, Brett's coming back in. We are live, and we are now ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is Commissioner Zimmerman. We are reconvening this committee meeting to the open session. Per by-state board policy, no final action votes are taken in executive session. Items requiring final action, a roll call vote is taken in open session. So therefore, I need a couple motions. The first one I'd like to do, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 20th, 2020 executive session of the Combined Operations Committee and Audit, Finance, and Administrative Committee meeting as a closed record?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Gully? Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Gully, I believe you're muted. I didn't get your vote.
Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
We also need a motion to approve the agreement between by-state development and St. Clair County Transit District for communications and 911 centers at the Emerson Park MetroLink facility as presented.
So move. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gully?
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach? Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Abstain.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Unless there is additional business, I will now request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourn the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining, wants to hang around a couple more hours?
Good job, Justin.
All right, well, y'all take care, okay? Have a good.